I will call the December 13th, 2022, 3:00 PM session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that we will take up later in the meeting this evening. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of business for consideration is Agenda item number five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no additions or corrections, I make a motion that we approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Agenda item number six, we're going to insert something there because the resolution that we were going to honor Robin Byrd with is going to be read at our 6:00 PM session instead, and it's about normal place for when we ask County Treasurer Scott Grunstaff to come up. Scott, welcome today. We didn't have you on the agenda because we thought you were not going to be in town, but again, welcome. Thank you.
I wasn't on the agenda this time, but we can. This is a report for as of November 30th, tax collection. The 2020 personal property tax election rate is 93.08%. During the month of November, we collected $57,056 real estate collection. As of November 30th, we collected 95.22% of the 21 real estate taxes. And so far, since January 1st, TACS has collected $624,684. And so far in the month of December, we've had nine DMV stops.
Okay. So do you want to have any items for Scott? I do have one. When will we actually get mail on the...
Personal property bills?
Yes, sir.
We're hoping this week to have the file done with the changes of the NBL fee and the 10% discount, and we hope to have that finalized, or the Commissioner and IT department hope to finalize and go through Darrell, make sure the PPTRE relief is exact right. So we'll get a file done this week. I'll have it printed sometime next week, but as far as being mailed, it'll be after Christmas.
Okay.
Have a Merry Christmas.
All right. Well, I didn't know if Santa was making the delivery from home, so.
It'll be after Christmas. He's too busy.
Any other questions? Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, Ms. Desiree, I believe, then, you have a resolution for the board's consideration?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to the Henry County Board of Supervisors, 50th anniversary of the Anchor Commission. Whereas, the Anchor Commission was formed in April 1972 to provide comprehensive care and individualized treatment to assist youth and their families in achieving optimal health and well-being. And whereas, the life skills promoted by the Anchor Commission are essential to the emotional and economic prosperity of our families, communities, and businesses in Henry County. And whereas, the Anchor Commission operates the only youth group home in our region, accommodating approximately 30 young men between the ages of 12 and 17 every year. And whereas, the living environment helps our youth achieve behavioral goals through individualized and group counseling, community service, and educational benchmarking. And whereas, the Anchor Commission is similarly dedicated to reducing adolescent substance abuse through the Seven Challenges Program, which empowers our youth to take control of their own lives through wise decision-making. And whereas, the Anchor Commission also offers assistance to parents through co-parenting classes designed to assist parents on focusing on the responsibilities of parenting from separate households. And whereas, every service provided by the Anchor Commission reinforces the notion that they are indeed a new chance organization. Now therefore, will be resolved on this 13th day of December 2022, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes this milestone anniversary and thanks the Anchor Commission for its 50 years of dedicated service to Henry County. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Vice Chairman Bryant, if you, Ms. Desiree and Mr. Dillard would present this, we have Ricky Walker with us here today. If you would present this on behalf of the board.
Yes, sir, I would. I've been there, been anchor for seven years now, and I will be shortly. Time flies when you have it. But anyway, I just want to tell the board, the staff in Henry County, the citizens of Henry County, that we deeply thank you for the support you've given us over these 50 years. We will not be able to continue or offer the services we have over the last 50 years without the support from Henry County, from Patrick County, and the City of Martinsville. And I can't thank you enough. And we try to be as responsive as we can to the courts, to the court service unit, and to the citizens and the leadership of Henry County. So anything we can do, let us know, and we try to make sure that we change with the time and keep everything updated so that we can give the best service we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, the board has in front of it a copy of the annual financial report and a letter from the firm of Credel, Jones &amp; Alvin. Mr. Wagner.
The firm of Credel, Jones, and Alvin Professional Counsel has completed its financial audit of the county account for the fiscal year June 30, 2022. This is Kim Jackson with Credel, Jones, and Alvin here to provide an overview of the audit and answer any questions.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm going to just do a brief summary of the sections of the audit report, if you want to follow along. The financial section is the first part of the audit report and includes the independent audit report, which states the audit was performed in accordance with all applicable audit statements. Based on the audit procedures, an unmodified opinion or plain opinion was issued for fiscal year 2022. Pages 1 to 8 is the management discussion and analysis, which summarizes the financial reports for the fiscal year in a condensed format. Pages 9 to 19 are the basic financial statements. Pages 9 and 10 represent a full balance sheet and statement of activities, which include your pension and OPEB actuarially determined liabilities and/or assets. And they can vary widely from year to year based on various factors and assumptions. Page 11 is the balance sheet that everybody's most familiar with, which is the balance sheet of the governmental funds, which includes the general fund and the main operating fund that can manage. On page 11, total fund balance of the general fund is approximately $67 million, which is a decrease of almost $12 million from the prior year. The decrease was due primarily to the capital expenditures on the new adult detention center. On page 11, the unassigned portion of the fund balance is approximately $32,000. This is the portion of the fund balance that hasn't been assigned, committed, or restricted for any other specific purpose. Unassigned fund balance at the end of the previous fiscal year was approximately $32,000. So the unassigned fund balance increased around $700,000. The county's financial policy requires it to maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance.
You're saying $32,000 or $32 million? Okay, gotcha.
And the county's unassigned fund balance at 6322 exceeded this minimum requirement by 9.1 million. Page 13 is the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. As you can see, the county's capital outlet expenditures were approximately $16 million, which is primarily for the new adult detention center. Pages 15 to 17 represent the financial position and activities of the proprietary funds, which are the Marina Fund and the Self-Insurance Fund. Pages 18 and 19 are the fiduciary funds. These funds include the OPEB trust account and the custodial funds, which include the inmate fund held by the sheriff and the special welfare fund for social services. Pages 20 to 99 are the footnotes to the financial statements, which are required disclosures under accounting standards. Pages 46 to 48, or footnote 13, is the long-term debt footnote, which reflects the borrowings on the new adult detention center and also the school debt. Pages 37, 45, and 49 have new footnotes that are related to leases, which are a new requirement this year due to implementation of a new standard from the Government Accounting Standards Board, referred to as GASB 87. Page 37 has your required disclosures as for the county being the lessor, and pages 45 and 49 have the required disclosures for the county being the lessy. Page 51 has footnote 19, which is the required disclosure that discusses the ongoing litigation of the county as of the issuance of the financial statements on material litigation as the City of Martinsville reversion to a town. Pages 52 to 96 are all required footnotes related to the county's pension and OPEB, often referred to as the other post-employment benefits. Pages 100 to 105 start the required supplementary information, which are your detailed budget to actual comparisons for the general fund revenues and expenditures. Pages 106 to 109 include the same schedule for other governmental funds. Pages 110 to 131 include more required supplementary data on the pension and OPEB, which are 10-year term reports. Pages 132 to 139 reflect the special grants project fund and school fund financial position and financial activity for the fiscal year. Following that is the IDA and social services, the component units of the county. Pages 145 to 146 reflect the custodial funds, financial activity. Following that is the Other Information section, which has various financial data comparisons. And then the final section is the Compliance section, which includes the audit reports and opinions on internal controls, compliance over major federal programs, and compliance with the Commonwealth of Virginia law, regulations, contracts, and grants. All of these opinions were clean with no findings of non-compliance for the fiscal year. Does anybody have any questions? It's a lot to take in. And then, I think each of you have a copy in your packet of a management letter. Points for the year, we had two instances we wanted to draw to the board's attention. Some mobile home titling tax. County receives a quarterly revenue stream from the State of Virginia for mobile home titling tax collected from county Henry taxpayers. The quarterly payment from the state is initiated by the County Commissioner of Revenue, reviewing and signing reports, which are then submitted to the state for payment. During the county's budget process for fiscal year 23, it was discovered that none of the funds have been received since the quarter ended March 31, 2021. The county staff was able to coordinate with the state and the Commissioner of Revenue to submit the required forms, to collect the payments for all the prior quarters which were collected prior to the completion of the audit. The recommendation is that the County Commissioner of Revenue should take necessary action to ensure these reports are submitted timely to the state so that payments are received timely by the county. Bank reconciliations. Our management letter dated December 13, 2018, for the fiscal year 2018 audit included the following comment. During the course of the audit, we discovered numerous instances where monthly bank reconciliations for the county's deposit accounts were not reconciled timely by the county treasurer's office. This caused reconciling items not to be resolved timely, which caused the county's general ledger not to be corrected timely. Also, there was no indication on the bank reconciliations that the county treasurer had reviewed and approved the reconciliations. The county treasurer or his staff should prepare monthly bank reconciliations for all deposit accounts upon receipt of the bank statement in order to avoid unreported transactions in the general ledger. The monthly bank reconciliation should always be completed with reconciling items resolved prior to receiving the next month's bank statement. Furthermore, the preparer of the reconciliation should sign and date the reconciliation upon completion. Furthermore, the county treasurer should review all monthly bank reconciliations for their accuracy and to ensure all reconciling items have been appropriately resolved. The county treasurer should sign and date all reconciliations as an indication he has performed this test. Our audit procedures for fiscal year 2022 also discovered numerous instances where monthly bank reconciliations for the county's deposit accounts were not reconciled timely by the county's treasurer's office. In addition, many reconciling items are not being resolved timely, if at all. More concerning was many of the bank account reconciliations that were prepared did not actually balance or reconcile, yet the county treasurer had initially reconciliations as being complete and accurate. This indicates a controlled procedure that is failing to function as intended. The county treasurer should do what is necessary to follow our recommendations and our prior management letter. Any questions?
I have a question. Under the mobile home titling tax, you said that funds had not been received since the quarter ended March 31, 2021. Can you put that in perspective for me about how much money we're talking about? Do you know?
It's a line item on the budget to actual...
Between $100,000 and $200,000. It's somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 a year.
A year, okay. Thank you.
You mentioned the bank reconciliations. I guess from your professional viewpoint, if you know something you feel comfortable responding to, what would be the possible reasons for that particular issue? What could be some of the possible reasons for that?
That they were not timely?
Yes, not timely.
And not reconciled.
Not reconciled.
I would say lack of training probably is a big issue, or lack of staff, or just not paying attention to the details, just kind of trying to get it done to say it's done.
Do you know if it's, when they're not balanced, is it not balanced less, not balanced more, or is that information that you have?
Either way.
Which trend did you see? Was it more or less?
So some things we saw were like, if, just say like a decimal was in the wrong place, but it could be a big amount from like $3,000 to $3 million, just depending on like a key word error. More things like that.
Tens in the detail. Ms. Wagner. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to add to this? Or Mr. Jones, that perhaps from the board's standpoint, is this something that we can flag each month or in regard to that versus finding out after an audit of report?
So as far as the mobile vehicles titling fee, we are checking that quarterly to see if those deposits are coming in, and that will tell us if this has been filed properly by the Commissioner of Revenue, and then we can prompt that individual to take the necessary steps to get that paperwork in to Richmond, to get it processed. You may recall, as far as the bank reconciliations, this board asked the treasurer in 2018 to frame a periodic report monthly to the board showing that they've been reconciled. And generally, we have received that report, but you've probably noticed on occasion it is a little late. And other than prompting them and encouraging them to do fiscally responsible things and reconcile the bank statements and submit those titling tracks, I don't have any other recommendations for staff. I will say that our finance staff under Darrell Jones' leadership has taken extra steps to just verify information that it all lines up and matches up with what they have on their records.
Board members, would you support us drafting a letter stating what our expectations are?
Yeah, I think we should ask the Commissioner and Scott to bring us their thoughts on how they can correct the issues themselves, as well as our recommendations.
I mean, you know, you talk about situations like this. If they're understaffed, you know, they can take care of that in a sense. But, you know, if it's neglect, you know, then that's what we've got to address, the neglect part of it. It's no, to me, it's no excuse for what happened. Either the treasurer's office or the commissioner's office, there's no reason that either one of those should put us in the situation that you just brought to our attention, which we have this week to look at, but, you know, through your audit.
Kim, I know you have to be the bearer of this, and we appreciate that because, again, these are details that are important to everyone. It's important to not only board members, financial staff, but it's important to all of us to know that we're managing things in a fashion that is professional. And, you know, again, if we need to let it be known as to what our expectations are, I take no offense to the letter that you all have prepared us with some information. I have one other question, and either Mr. Jones, Mr. Wagner, and you may have stated it, and I did not catch it. Would you state what our financial net position is in regard to a gain or loss from last year?
Let me add, you know, during the, as the auditor pointed out, there is no misappropriation of the funds, and they're well accounted for in all situations. They give us an unmodified opinion. So rest assured that money is being handled appropriately and is not mismanaged or misappropriated. So that's a good news, even with the management letter presented. But our unassigned fund balance grew approximately $700,000 from fiscal year. So we're approximately $32 million in unassigned fund balance.
$32 million in unassigned, and what was total?
$67.
$67 million.
$67, okay. And I apologize, I missed that.
It's a lot of numbers.
All right, thank you.
And keep in mind that the total balance, a lot of those funds are already committed for projects that are already underway, recoverances. However, now with interest rates improving, that has generated some interest income for us that we have not seen in the last several years. So having that large savings account has provided something as well on the interest side of that.
May I add that your own financial policies require that you maintain a minimal unassigned fund balance.
Yes, sir.
And so that to maintain that minimal unassigned, the amount you really have to work with is $9.1 billion. You never want to dip into the amount that you define your policy that you need to maintain as a minimum level. So $9.1 billion, your financial policy by now is $9.1 billion. So I look at that as the amount that's discretionary.
And as in going back, I think, to 2017, those were, policies were adopted financially because of bond ratings and being able, the ability to borrow?
To get the bond rating that we need to get to finance the adult detention center, we instituted those policies as a recommendation for the financing agencies in New York City as well we needed to maintain some minimum, to maintain this bond rating.
Kim, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It takes us to Agenda item number nine, or do we need an adoption of that? I didn't...
Yes, you need to accept.
Yes, and I apologize, I have my, I need a action by the board in regard to accepting the audit for 2021, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I make recommendation that we accept the audit for fiscal year 21 through 22.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Now, Agenda item number nine, we have an update from Martinville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Members of the board, it's clear to kind of give you a brief update on our activities of the last month. Business development, the biggest item for the month was Small Business Saturday, which was held November 26. We had our, as we have in several previous years, the $10 gift certificates for folks to visit restaurants in town. We had 600 of those tickets available, 400, or that were issued, 469 were actually redeemed, and in total, when all of a sudden, $6,228 of additional business for our local restaurants. And the intent is to get people to go someplace they haven't been before, to try something new, and it's a really good day. You see that Jerry's Pizza led the way with the most turned in, Pacific Bay and Captain's Town were close second and third. Under marketing, we'll look at the, or you have the unemployment report for the month. We continue to track low 3%. Our unemployment rate is very steady, and again, we have 11,000 people that leave the county every day for work. That's really the labor force that we're selling to our clients. So we have a store closed in unemployment, which is a good thing in some ways. We sent out, Spencer Johnson sent out our 11th Annual Wage and Benefit Survey. We went to 99 companies, 40 of those responded, which is about average for government to give back. That is the number one source of wage and benefit information that we use internally and with prospects. We had, since our last time we did, we had our Virginia Business Red Site Program site visit a week ago, Monday. Mr. Wagner and others, Tim Pace were involved with us. You know, we have a request for $22 million in with the state. We are pretty confident we'll receive a substantial amount to help us create a lot suit. Whether or not we give the entire amount, we don't know, but that project is a $30 million project, and we have other local grant money that's available to balance that out. We created a 60-mile drive map showing our labor shed. We benchmarked ourselves with Carolina Core Mega Sites. Those are the four mega sites in North Carolina that have had recent announcements. We included Berry Hill, and interesting for us, both in population workforce and manufacturing workforce, our labor numbers are twice what any of the other sites are. So from a labor draw standpoint, we're in a very good position. That was a study that we did at the request of the state as a part of this grant application that we have in. Tourism remains very busy and active. We had 15 phone calls, fulfilled nine package requests, and you'll see we continue on a regular basis to distribute our activity guides, 519. We're distributing among 28 local businesses. The Dick and Willie continues to be a very active trail. September had over 10,000 people on it. That's probably a lot to do with the weather was so good, and it continues to be a great draw. 16,000 subscribers on the bi-weekly blast, and 262 of our clients got their monthly news loaders. Several blogs and calendar events have been written and published, you can see those. In workforce development, our normal monthly meetings, we're designing a nonprofit resource guide, and we're also working on a design for a new sign at the Martinville Duffel Park. You might come by there out in Speedway and realize that's not a very attractive venture for New York City and as a community, and we can't improve on that. Probably happy to answer your question.
Mark, you were talking about creating a 60-minute drive time map. Where can that be viewed? Is it on the website?
No, that's the 60-mile radius. We did put that up. We just used that for our prospect.
Okay.
I mean, it's not the project, and we're happy to give it to anybody, it's just not, it's not been posted yet.
Any other questions, Mark, this time? Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11, introduction of lobbyists from Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies. Mr. Wagner.
Henry County has engaged the services of Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies to assist us with promoting the board's legislative agenda and the Virginia General Assembly and the executive branch of state government. More straightforward way to say that may be, they are boots on the ground in Richmond. Joining us today from the firm are Julia Hammond and Heidi Hertz.
Good afternoon, I'm Julia Hammond with Cozen-O'Connor, Cozen Public Strategies. We are an international law firm, Cozen Public Strategies is a subsidiary of the, subsidiary of it, hello. Our office is based, our Virginia office is based in Richmond. Former Attorney General Jerry Kilgore is the managing partner of the firm. A little about myself, I've spent my entire career in and around the Virginia General Assembly in the public sector, working for members of the General Assembly delegates in their offices. I was the lobbyist for a former governor, Governor Bob McDonnell. And I've run trade associations, most notably the National Federation of Business, and now back in the private sector with Cozen, where we have a myriad of clients, business, nonprofits, healthcare, and then, of course, local governments. You, Heidi?
Hi, everyone, Heidi Hertz. I joined Cozen most recently in January. I'm originally from Lunenburg County, so I'm a little disappointed that you won't find Lunenburg on that 60-mile map. It's a little bit far there outside of reach here. But I've been working over the last couple of years in a variety of different sectors with state agencies, but also most recently in Governor Northern's administration as a deputy secretary of agriculture and forestry, with an eye towards economic development, specifically in rural areas. So that's the hat that I wear a lot of times on the Cozen team, look forward to working with you.
So just a brief update, we are in the throes of session preparation. 2023 session starts on January 11. We have a little housekeeping business to do before it starts. We have two special elections coming up, one to fill the seat for delegate Mark Keem in Northern Virginia, who joined the Biden administration. And then the seat, the Senate seat vacated by Senator Jen Kiggins, who's now going on to Congress, having defeated former Representative Elaine Luria. We, it is likely we will have at least one, if not two more, special elections before session ends, which is scheduled roughly the end of February, assuming they stick to their 46-day schedule. The first one will be for, to replace delegate Ronnie Campbell, who very sadly passed away today. And the second one, it's a little bit of a toss-up right now, as you heard in the news, Congressman Dominic Keachan passed away from cancer earlier this month. And we now have three members of the General Assembly vying to take over that seat because of the political demographics of that seat. The winner of next week's Firehouse Primary will likely be the nominee, who will be seated in February. So we will either be replacing delegate Lamont Bagby in the House, or the options are Senator Jennifer McClellan or Senator Joe Morrissey. So we have three House members right now. I don't know of any sort of general public who's interested, so we're going to have a lot of change. And as you know, given the political tightness, the very low numbers or the difference between majority and minority parties in both the House and the Senate will watch that like a hawk, because it makes a very big difference in floor and committee votes. This week, the biggest news will be delivered by the governor on Thursday, when he delivers his budget to the joint money committees. He's been very slowly rolling out some of those items. Kind of the biggest one of note for Henry County is the $350 million he plans to invest in site-ready initiatives. That'll all flow through VEDP. He has also been kind of slow-rolling out the workforce development changes through Secretary Slater. There are going to have to be a lot of budget items on that, too. You may have heard the governor or his team talk about how workforce development is split among six secretariates and roughly 38 different state agencies. And so there's a thought that there are a lot of efficiencies that can be had, certainly money that can be saved or better spent by moving that together. And that's going to be one of the very big goals the governor has for this year. Obviously, we will keep an eye to make sure any impacts to Henry County are positive. The governor is also going to, and Heidi will talk a little bit more about the investments he's going to make into mental health treatment, public safety, of course, K-12, since that was one of his biggest issues that he campaigned on. And another one that should be, could be a bit of a surprise on Thursday, there's been quite a lot of talk about tax reform or tax relief, sort of, they use those terms together in the corporate and personal space. So far, I've not heard that people have wanted people to be included in that, along with machinery and tools. So fingers crossed there won't be any unfunded mandates as part of that budget cycle for local governments. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but Heidi has a couple other items of note for you.
So just as we were referenced, we will be your boots on the ground. We will be watching for any of the items that are in your legislative package, when these show up in the variety of different forms that they will. We'll be watching in education for the new college institute, looking to lean in and support whenever the discussions lean that way. As Julia mentioned, the governor did announce earlier this week a task force on emergency care orders or temporary detention orders. I will be putting a task force together, and I know that was a priority for you in your public safety section of your legislative agenda, so we'll be watching on that. And then tomorrow, Dale gets to do the exact trip that we just did to come here. He'll be joining us tomorrow to kick off a discussion with the director of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Matt Wells, a friend, a great colleague, to talk about the Mayo River State Park and really begin to understand a little bit more about the master plan process. It sounds like it's been on hold for a little bit, and would like to shake that free if we can, and think that we may be able to do that a little through working with the department to see if we can go ahead and get that scheduled and get some of those dates solidified. So those are some of the things that off the top we'll be making sure that we're watching. And I think Julia has had a conversation about some of the reversion, and know that's something that you're interested in, too.
And then finally, we, in addition to being boots on ground, we also like to supply information for you and your constituencies. So throughout session, we will be providing Dale and however you like us to disseminate information on bill tracking, budget items, where they stand in the process. There may be questions that you get from constituents about completely unrelated things to what is included in the legislative package, please feel free to reach out. We're happy to provide you any information on those items, along too with any state action, et cetera. Having served as a legislative aide, I am very familiar with constituents and the types of questions they ask, and of course, the response time that they expect. So please let us be helpful to you in that.
I'd like to ask, you know, I hear the things that you're pushing for, supporting, what are some of the specific actions that you carry out to make sure that it's not, you know, because being in education, you know, we go to meetings in Northern Virginia, Richmond, Tidewater, they're going to always outvote us, you know, and different things. But how do you make sure that our voice is heard? You know, it's one thing to share the concern, but how are we making sure that our voice is heard and, you know, our voice is as loud as Northern Virginia, Richmond, Tidewater, and those areas, so that when a vote is made, you know, we're taken into consideration by more than just the one or two folk that you may speak to privately?
So, sure. So while you are correct, the population centers in Northern Virginia, Central Hampton Roads may have more legislators. We have two things going for us. You have a very passionate, very senior members of the House and Senate, because rural Virginia does not have the same level of shakeups when it comes to politics or members. And they, they hold a great deal of sway, and we are friends with and have worked with. Truly, I'm now, this will be my 22nd session at the General Assembly. So we, we know how to get to all of them and make sure they're here. But you also have, through this administration, and not just the governor, but his appointees, they, they understand that rural Virginia did really deliver the Commonwealth to Governor Youngkin and his team. And they are constantly looking for opportunities to show their thanks and their gratitude to those portions of the Commonwealth that showed up in much larger numbers than other parts when you look at turnout and talent. But also, we just, we don't, we don't like to lose, ever. For any of you who are familiar with Jerry Kilgore, who's also a part of the lobbying team, I apologize, he's in DC today and wasn't able to join us for the road trip. We don't lose, we find ways to come up with solutions. So if it looks like, let's, I'm trying to think of a good example we had from last year, so you can really sort of see. So on school safety and school construction issues, there was a lot of concern that small dollars would be given to rural communities because they don't have the number of students, and they don't necessarily have the number of buildings. They do have the number of need, and so we did an excellent job on behalf of, we represent the Coalition of Small and Rural Schools, and parading around pictures, testimony, we set up, not just Zooms, we bus people in to talk about the issues and concerns, and we received historic amounts of money invested in the school construction grants. And right now, I know the DOE was looking at trying to kick the can and have it not work for projects that started July 1, and have it more start in the grant program. And we've been working with the Attorney General's Office to ensure that it is July 1 as promised and intended by the General Assembly, the impact of constituencies. I can give you more examples, but we don't, there's no stop, there's no easing up on the throttle for any of our clients.
And I'll just spotlight one, one tactical example. We participate, there is a rural caucus, in recognition that singularly each part of rural Virginia may not be able to compete in numbers or in votes with Northern Virginia, Hampton Roads, or Richmond. There's a caucus of rural legislators. That means every Thursday evening, we are present, and within that legislative agenda, we make sure that your legislative agenda is heard, so that they can see what is happening. Because if it's, if it's good for Henry County, it likely is going to be good for the surrounding counties and the surrounding districts as well. And so making sure that we're leveraging that as an asset is something that we take really seriously, and make sure that we are present at those meetings, and make sure that we are lifting up the concerns and the needs of this community in that form.
Julia, Heidi, we thank you both for being here. We know that as part of the engagement with you all, you will offer regular reporting back to county administration, who will in turn report back to us. And we thank you, thank you so much for being here today. We do have a couple members of the press here today from local newspapers. If you would be so kind to offer them some time after we conclude the 3:00 PM session.
Happy to.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number 12, Financial Matters 12A, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Harvest Foundation Grant for Broadband Project. Mr. Wagner.
Staff has asked for appropriate $1,491,500 received from the Harvest Foundation for the county's universal broadband project. The funds will provide a match to other state and local funds already committed to the deployment of broadband in Henry County.
Okay. Staff recommends approval of this, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve the additional appropriation of grant funds in the amount of $1,491,500.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. 12B, Additional Appropriation Referencing Pupil Transportation and Fuel Costs for the School Board. Mr. Wagner.
The school board is requesting approval of two categorical transfers that will facilitate the purchase of five school buses and two passenger vans and address shortages in the fuel budget. The first transfer is for $888,600 from the instruction category to the pupil transportation category. The second transfer is $210,000 from administration attendance and health category to the pupil transportation category. And Dr. Boone is here, as well as Assistant Superintendent Scott, should you have any questions?
Okay, the board has sufficient background material on this as well, as part of your board packet. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation of approving the two category transfers as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 13, we have a presentation Drug Treatment Court for Piedmont Community Services. Mr. Wagner.
Earlier this year, the Virginia Spring Court granted approval for an adult drug treatment court in Henry County as an alternative to judicial judicial processes for certain offenders. Judge Carter Greer is leading this effort, Piedmont Community Services manages it. Ms. Kelly Cobble with PCS, admitting members of the drug treatment treatment team is here with us today to provide more information about the program. And Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Dale, thank you, Chairman and the board, for allowing us to come and talk a little bit about this initiative. So I wanted to start first by just explaining a little bit more about what a drug court is, for those of you that might not be aware. Back in 2004, the Virginia General Assembly enacted the Drug Treatment Court Act, which is Virginia Code 18.2. So this is a specialty docket. Individuals who entered this treatment program do leave our traditional court processing to come into a specialty docket, which we actually have every other Friday afternoon right now. The goal is that we are going to reduce drug use. We want to, but along with that, if we reduce drug use, we're going to reduce associated criminal behavior. We're going to improve family relationships, possibly have parents who are able to regain custody of their children. We're also going to remove those cases from traditional courtrooms. Additional benefits that have been found to happen when you have a good working drug court is that you have improved public health, increased child support, increased employment, and folks maintain and build family relationships with those that they have lost. And you're also going to reduce recidivism. So there are 1,400 drug courts across the country. There are actually 50 in the state of Virginia. Forty-seven of those are adult drug courts. Roanoke, Halifax, and Danville are localities close to us that also have adult drug courts. So this is a big question, and I'll be honest, I don't know that everyone totally understands why a drug court works versus just traditional treatment. But it does, research has shown that it does, and I think the biggest reason that it does is because you have a multidisciplinary team, it is very intensive. None of us have been able to solve a drug use on our own in our silos. Probation does a great job, but they don't have treatment. Piedmont does a great job, but we don't have monitoring and curfews, and we don't have some of the leverage that the courts do. So it allows us to use all of those folks to put together what we think is a comprehensive plan for each individual person. The treatment is intensive, it is a minimum of one year. Although across the state, folks generally actually stay in drug treatment courts for an average of 600 days. So I think that just kind of shows how hard it is to fight a drug addiction. So 12 months you flew through and you, you didn't have any mess ups. We haven't had one of those yet, but I look forward to the day that we have someone graduate 12 months. So frequent court appearance, we do have sanctioning for folks, you can go to jail for a week, a weekend, a couple of days, especially if you're dishonest with our team and with the courts. But we also do incentives. We try to encourage folks, we try to praise them when they're doing well. Most of our incentives are little things like gift cards. We do certificates every time they phase up, there's a five-phase program. So, and I said this a minute ago, but the problem of drugs and crime is just too broad for any one entity to tackle. So this is a way to bring us all together. And drug courts have significantly reduced crime, an average of 80 to 26 percentage points. And this is came out of the Supreme Court research from 2021 in the state of Virginia. And well-administered drug courts can reduce crime rates by as much as 35%. Also want to talk about the cost savings that this can be to the locality in the state. We all know that it can be very expensive to house someone in the jail setting. Again, this is from Virginia Supreme Court information. A successful person in drug court is going to save the area, the Commonwealth, $19,234. Obviously, not everybody is successful, I just want to be honest about that. But in 2021, the Commonwealth of Virginia thinks they saved over $4 million having drug courts around our state. So if we were able to graduate just six participants this year, we're going to save $115,000 for the locality. So it's around $12,000 a person just from the cost of having them in the jail. So hopefully, that can help kind of understand the numbers a little bit. We do need to expand. We received a community foundation grant when we first started. That money has quickly ran out. Currently, everything that we are doing is in kind, from all of the participants in our treatment team and our advisory team, we have just made it work. But we are limited as to how many individuals we can take right now without having some additional staffing. So we would like additional funding. I do have a number in here that I had also presented to city council, but since that, we have been approached by Harvest, and we have done a grant application for Harvest to hopefully receive some of this funding. So I did want to say that out loud. I do know the opioid abatement money is out, and you guys will be making decisions about that. So I just, I just want to put Drug Treatment Court in your ear, and I really just want you to know how hard our folks are working. We need a coordinator. I am currently the Drug Treatment Court coordinator, but I'm also the assistant director of Piedmont, have a lot of hats to wear. We do have a case manager, and he is with us, that's Quincy Gravely there. Quincy is not a full-time case manager for a drug court, because I don't have the money to pay him full-time. So he has to do some other duties to be able to have full-time work right now. We also have, and I wanted to go ahead and introduce the rest of the team that was with us, Ms. Sandra Haley, Chief. us, Ms. Sandra Haley, Chief Public Defender's Office. Sandy has been instrumental. She is part of our advisory committee and our treatment team and has given a lot of time and effort into this. Ms. Jessica Ally Cox. Jessica is our probation officer, and she is on our treatment team. She's doing lots of drug screens and doing lots of monitoring and curfew. And then we have Chief Amy Stevenson. Amy is the chief of probation, and she also serves on our advisory committee. Other individuals who are not able to be here are also just spending a lot of time and effort to make sure this works, and we want to be able to offer folks some compensation for that. So the judge and I did put together what we thought was just kind of a bare bones budget for a year, and that's $152,000. And that's very minimal, but that would probably get us, right now, we only have four participants in our drug court. We would like to serve anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20 at a time, depending on availability and resources. Do want to talk to you about the other members on our team that were not able to be here today. Mr. Tim Wood is our treatment representative. He also works for Piedmont Community Services. Mr. Andrew Nestor, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, is part of our team. Obviously, Judge Carter Greer. Then we have Frida Holliday, who is the Director of Court Services with Halifax and Pennsylvania County, but she also is over pre-trial services that we have recently got in our area. She has been a wealth of information as she is the Drug Court Coordinator in Halifax. And then Captain Alan Hall also serves on our team. Like I said, we are at five participants thus far, and I know that doesn't sound like a large number. There's two in particular that are doing super well that we're super proud of, and to see not only the impact that the Treatment Court has had on them, but the impact it's had on their family, how it is rebuilding relationships, how one of them now has a relationship with her children who she was not talking to prior to, that they're getting jobs, that they're learning, they're getting peer certifications. It's really just heartwarming to see. Welcome you all to come to court at any time if you would like. The treatment teams are closed, but the actual court session is an open session and open to the public. I'd like to be open to any questions that you have, and I'll either try to answer those or I'll ask my team members maybe for some help.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just as case manager, what are some of the specifics that you do on a daily basis in working with the clients?
Thank you. I heard the term a little while ago, boots on the ground. So that's what I do. I'm the boots on the ground. In this program, I have many different roles. My favorite role is I establish a rapport with the individuals. I'm the individual who they call 24 hours, seven days a week. I'm there when they're having rough days, I'm there when they have good days. I'm there to experience the highs and the lows with them. And I take great pleasure in that because when someone deals with substance abuse, they have to be able to establish a rapport with someone, believe in individual who believes in them no matter how they feel. And we all again know someone who suffers from substance abuse disorder, a community, and see how that drug culture has affected our community. So I am a product of that environment. So this is not something that I am excited about doing, it's something that I'm passionate about doing. I look forward to coming to work, helping the individuals daily to hear their highs and hear their lows, to motivate them, to push them on even when they feel like they don't have the strength or the backing to do so. So that's particularly, that's what I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. He's our blue. He keeps us all together, and he's the one up there actually doing the hard work. And we couldn't do it without him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. Agenda item number 14, consideration of date and time of 2023 organizational meeting. Mr. Wagner.
The Board Supervisors is required to have an organizational meeting at or extending to the first of the year. During the meeting, the board will set its meeting dates for the 2023 county year. You elect a chairperson and vice chairperson. Staff suggests Monday, January 9th, or Tuesday, January 10th at 5:00 PM, but staff will work with whatever date and time is decided.
I got a touch base with everyone at some point in time, and does January 9th work for everyone, and let's just say 5 o'clock? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we establish the organizational meeting, January 9th, 2023, at 5:00 PM.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Informational items is agenda item 15. I will begin by taking comments from the board, starting with Mr. Zaire.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes, sir. I just want to thank Dale. This is my, I guess, end of my first year, and you know, everything's going well, and you know, we had a transition, and Dale jumped in in the middle of a lot of different conversations with reversion, and you know, we had the conversations with the Sheriff's Department. And just, you know, he's off to a great start. I think he's doing a really good job building relationships. Always accessible. I feel bad sometimes because I text him and really expect a response in the morning or email him, and you know, I get a response that night. And he communicates very well. He doesn't leave anything open for discussion. You know, he's very pointed with his communication, so I just want to thank him for helping me to have a, you know, good first year, successful first year, and look forward to continuing working with you.
Right. Mr. Wyatt.
Well, then just, I want to just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. You know, we just need to be aware of the unfortunate people in the area and look out to help give the community the best we can, especially unfortunate people.
Right. Thank you. Ms. McCann.
I have a question, and maybe it was a better time to ask it when we were going over the financial report, but I know there's been some question about our purchase policy. And I know that changed mid-year when you took office. Can you update us on that?
Sure, and thank you for giving me advance notice on this. I have some information prepared.
Good.
Our county policy currently matches what the Commonwealth of Virginia allows as far as purchase, which says that any purchase over $100,000 must be approved by the Board Supervisors. However, on July 1st, I implemented a more restrictive policy requiring all purchases over $50,000 to come to the Board Supervisors for approval. The one exception to that more restrictive policy is when the land of purchase will cost considerably more money, and a good example of that is purchasing vehicles right now, which is a major challenge. For example, this week, we found a vehicle for the sheriff's office that was going to cost $53,000, and had been looking for several months. Had we waited until the board meeting to purchase that vehicle, it would have cost us a lot more than the $53,000 that we paid for. So that's one exception that our approved purchases between $50,000 and $100,000. Otherwise, all purchases will come before you all that are over $50,000 for approval.
Thank you.
And would you state also what the purchasing policy in state of emergency would be?
So there is some flexibility in state code during an emergency situation that allows, when a locality declares a state of emergency, granting very broad purchasing powers to the county administrator to specifically address the emergency. And I can give you an example for that. If there's active flooding coming in the building, and it's going to cost a lot of money to get sand back stored and stacked up in front of the doorways, then I can make that executive decision and then bring it back to you for approval after the fact. Up to, I think the code of Virginia says $300,000 for emergency situations under the Stafford Act of appropriations.
And one last thing, and you and I have had an advanced discussion on this. Anything in the past in regard to purchasing in ARPA was not decided by one person. Was that a committee action that brought together recommendations for ARPA fund spending?
Yes, and during part of that time, we were at an emergency declaration due to COVID pandemic, and there was a panel convened of the county administrator and other members of staff to make determinations what was the most appropriate expenditure of the ARPA and at the time, I think it was called CARES Act funds. So those committees reviewed each purchase if they were purchased during an emergency declaration part of that.
And that would have included administrative expenses, not only on this, but public safety or anything related to it?
Right. And you may remember, early on in the pandemic, there was a significant shortage of Nitrile Rubber Gloves.
Yes.
And it was a sinewy circumstance where, at one point, you know, our public safety staff was, you know, having to reach far and wide to get those gloves and PPD for their staff. So that was one rare instance where they had to make immediate decisions.
Thank you. Ms. McCann, do you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Slaughter?
No.
And I don't have anything. Mr. Wagner.
I've got a few things if you indulge me. I'm going to ask JR to come to the podium just briefly first. You mentioned, keep in mind all those that are struggling through the holidays, and we're very blessed to work here. So I've asked JR to tell you about a small community project that our employees kicked off over the last few weeks, and just speaks volumes about the quality of employees that you have working for.
Thank you, Dale. Just, yeah, I'd just like to share with the board real quick. Some of you may not be aware, but the head of county employees, we have an Employees Activities Committee, an EAC Committee. That committee is funded 100% by donations, contributions that are made by the employees each year. Beginning of each year, we send out a memo to the employees just asking if they would like to participate. Since its begin, I've been on it for 25 years since we originally started it, and it hasn't increased. It's $12 per year per employee if they wish to participate. And what that provides is throughout the year, we do luncheons. You may have stopped by the building here and seen us in the lobby. Sometimes we do Brunswick Stew. We've done several things that we fund through that for the employees. We also provide, in the event of a death, an immediate family member of an employee, the EAC provides flowers for the funeral, as well as a gift card if an employee has a child, a baby, we provide them a gift card for that. But one of our big projects, which is kind of separate from the funding that they contribute, is our Christmas project that we do every year. And that's a blessing. It's a time when all the employees come together, and we work along with the Henry County Schools as well as the senior services and identify some families in the community, as well as some senior citizens that need some help with whatever their needs may be. Our EAC Committee reaches out to the families, introduces ourselves, explains who we are and what can we do to help. What are some immediate needs that the family or seniors may have, as well as, of course, with children, what are some wants that they have? And I can say our employees step up each and every year and just go above and beyond in making sure that those families, those children, those seniors are taken care of. This year, we provided well over 100 presents. We were able to assist seven families, which equilibrated to 14 children and four senior citizens. Well over 100 wrapped presents were provided, and what really was a blessing was we also provide groceries to the families, all of the families. And this year, we set a record as far as the contributions that were given just for the groceries. Anything that's collected, 100% is used to purchase the groceries, and we collected $1,735 from our employees to go out and purchase the groceries. And so that provided, if you've ever seen a banana box, heavy-duty looking banana boxes, each family received four of those boxes that were heaped over with groceries. And the children were happy to see Santa Claus. This past Saturday, a group of the employees, along with Santa himself, delivered the presents to each of the residents and the senior citizens. The children were, of course, happy to see Santa Claus and the presents, and mom and dad were extremely excited to see those four boxes of groceries in many of the cases. So it just speaks to the quality of our employees, the love, the generosity that they have, and seeing that there is a need in our community and stepping up and doing the right thing. I'm just really proud of them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder of our holiday schedule, or we follow the state schedule for holidays. The county offices and PSA offices will be closed Friday, December 23rd, Monday, December 26th, and Monday, January 2nd for the New Year's holidays. Our convenience centers for recycling and grocery disposal will be closed on Saturday, December 24th, the date prior to Christmas. And our public information officer, Brandon Martin, has put together a small PowerPoint presentation I'd like to share with you that's related to 2022, actually towards the end of the year, to just kind of look back and see where we're at and what momentum we can carry into 2020.
Do we need to step?
May I ask the board to step down?
Nothing's on the screen.
It's not on the, it's not on the.
Nothing's come up on the screen.
So I don't have a lot of pictures, so you're welcome to just turn around and look if you want, because it's very short. So, so how do you describe 2022? Some of us might describe it as a return to normalcy. The pandemic is in a different phase, you know, where you've come through it. Some of us might describe it as a year of transition, a transitional year. Supervisor Garrett mentioned earlier, it's his first year on the board. My first time as a county administrator, and we have a new deputy county administrator, we have a new information technology director. Some might describe it as a challenging year. We've had some very challenging times this year. Reversion. Let me say that one more time. Reversion. Inflation, supply chain issues, global issues. So however you choose to describe it, your local government never failed in its mission of serving its citizens. Much of the success of our local government can be attributed to the sound physical policies established by this board, and you are being commended for your forward thinking when it comes to economic development and improving the quality of life for our citizens. I also give credit to the approximately 400-plus county employees, 58 PSA employees, and approximately 1,000 school employees that serve Henry County. Whether it be the employee that empties the garbage can at one of our parks facilities, or the engineer that designs the stormwater pond out of our industrial park, or the paramedic that provides the comfort to the mother having a heart attack, each of our employees has played a vital role in the operation of our local government. And one of the themes that I have promoted since July 1st is that there is no insignificant employee in our organization. Everyone is important to its success. So for this presentation, basically three major themes has emerged. Our moments, our mission, and our momentum. We had some interesting moments in 2022, many celebratory and anniversary sense. We celebrated with Patrick and Henry Community College on its 60th anniversary. They've been an anchor in our community for many years. We had a fire department that celebrated volunteer service for 50 years in our community. We had civic groups such as the Mount Olivet and Oklahoma Wilde Club that we helped celebrate their 50 years in our community. And just today, we recognized the wonderful work that the Anchor Commission is doing. We also have benefited from the philanthric investments of the Harvest Foundation for the past 20 years and our partnerships on rivers and trails with the Dan River Basin Association. So we have had some moments in 2022. We had some other big moments in 2022. We helped celebrate the 75th anniversary of the Marshall Speedway, and we all joined in a year-long celebration to note this accomplishment. Our local government created a temporary logo to mark this, and we used it for the duration of the calendar year. And interestingly, the most recent race at the Marshall Speedway became, was named by NASCAR, by CBS Sports, as the moment of the year when Ross Chastain tried to do a video game maneuver in real life and put us on the map as the most exciting NASCAR track in the world, or some of the most exciting racing and the most exciting track in America.
That's good. That's good.
So just to, just kind of give you what kind of exposure that provided for, just a quick check, should we have seen over 200 million times that that video of Ross Chastain chasing around the wall at Marshall Speedway with the Marshall logo in the back. And so we're proud to call and be home of the Marshall Speedway. But we also took the time to recognize some somber moments in our community, but it was long overdue to recognize the men of our local law enforcement that paid the ultimate price for serving our community. A board took the bold step to name bridges in honor of the seven courageous men who died in the line of duty, and their names are listed there before you. And there are many, many moments, many of you had got to experience those throughout the year, but we won't get into much more detail on those. But we also had an opportunity to emphasize our mission through 2022, and one of those is enhancing the quality of life. And perhaps one of the biggest and noticeable that will be going forward is our investment in universal broadband for all of our citizens. When we partnered with West Piedmont Planet District, Patrick and Franklin Counties to secure 33B and grant for universal broadband, where in phase one, we will deliver fiber to the Phase 1, we will deliver fiber to the homes of all the residents that have no access to internet now. Phase 2 will bring fiber to the homes for those people who have internet, just not very good internet. This will be a game changer in our community. We also took on other initiatives this year to enhance our quality of life. We began work on Phase 6A of the Dick and Willie Trail. We assisted Fielddale Recreation Center to obtain a $500,000 grant for the Appalachian Region Commission to revitalize that center. And we held the Second Annual Henry County Fair, which won two awards for its, in a showmanship, Best New Special Event and Most Creative Marketing Plans for them. We used grant funds to purchase land and conducted preliminary work on Henry County's newest park, the future Riverview Park. And we're currently soliciting citizen input on what they would like to see that park be in our community. We also gained some momentum on Amayo River State Park when Dan River Basin Association, local state park officials, and others created some trails through that property to get attention drawn to that. And as Ms. Hurst said earlier, we're going to Richmond tomorrow to meet with the Department of Conservation and Recreation to see how we can get that project moving much faster than it has been to this point. Couple other things we did. We opened an off-leash dog park in Collinsville, and we, once the trail is completed and underway, we'll have 11 miles of continuous paved trail running through our community. We also did, made maneuvers that enhanced our government services to our citizens. We closed our old jail that was overcrowded and just not proper for us to keep people in, and completed moving inmates into the new adult detention center at the end of March. We made good use of a former brownfield site and brought new life to that facility. And the construction of that project was on time and on budget, and we're currently working through the reimbursement process to get 25% of that money back from Commonwealth of Virginia now. We worked with VDOT to bring the Dupont Road into the secondary road system, reducing the ongoing maintenance cost to Henry County. You suggested that we hire a public information officer that has helped us greatly communicate consistent messages to our residents. Our public safety staff led an effort to create the Blue Ridge Fire and EMS Academy to address staffing shortages and to get EMS providers on the ambulance faster. With your leadership, for the first time in many years, our budget supported getting every licensed school staff person on step for the first time in many years. It's a priority of the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. You were able to give across-the-board pay increases to all county employees, and we were able to provide additional salary to deputies to align their pay with their years of service. You also authorized a compensation classification study to ensure that our employees will have the opportunity to be paid competitively in the future. We provided several onsite hill screenings and vaccine clinics for our employees, and we reemphasized the availability of our mental health resources for our employees. We continue to provide quality health insurance to our employees at no cost to them, and there is not any other locality close by that makes that claim. Our insurance fund is strong. We were mindful of the use of our tax dollars, and we took every opportunity to leverage outside funds to support our mission here in Henry County. We found funds to do additional grading at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center, and we continue to seek funds to do more. We had grant funds for vehicles for the Sheriff's Office, EMS trainer squads and equipment, to pay overtime to deputies in certain situations. We were to assist the volunteer fire departments and rescue squads with vehicles and equipment, expand the broadband, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. And just recently, the Public Service Authority was granted over $6 million to replace water lines in the Fielddale community. So we have a lot of momentum to carry us into 2023. Mr. He spoke about it earlier, unemployment rate is just below 3%. It's been hovering there for quite several months now. We have more people working in Henry County now than any time since 2003, even in the midst of population decline. And it's kind of an adage in our community now that anybody that wants to work is working. The average manufacturing wage in our community has gone up from $16 to $21, and when Mr. He finishes the market study he spoke of earlier, I suspect that will be even higher. So this is momentum. When our citizens are successful, when our citizens are working, it carries our community into, creates the momentum going into the next year. We saw exciting news at our Commonwealth Business Park with Press Glass being fully operational, and they're at full employment, running two shifts. They're well satisfied, and they have met all their obligations with the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund and the Harvest Opportunity Fund. Crown Holdings, as you know, is also at full employment. The first day that they opened, they were already at full employment, and they're currently ramping up to full production and have already produced several million cans in their new facility. So we're excited about that. And they have also, on the first day they opened, met all their obligations to the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund and the Harvest Opportunity Fund. Somewhere our economic momentum, we received the grant funds for the additional grading at Lot 5, which has produced an eight-acre pad that we're currently marketing. And we're currently working on the Virginia Site Rating Plan Grant Program to get the funds to finish grading Lot 2 from 57 acres to 150 acres. And I know you've heard me say this before. Once we get that done, it will be the only site in Virginia over 100 acres with all utilities in place and rail access. So it will put our park in a unique situation for marketing for industry to locate here that need rail. With your leadership and your financial support, we were able to extend the natural gas line to Commonwealth Crossing, which helped us make it a Tier 5 facility. And the gas is already flowing, and Crown Holdings is already using that gas. So it was a good investment already. So that was just a quick overview, but I'll leave you with this. We have a lot of momentum going into 2023. I look forward to working with each of you as we tackle the challenges and the opportunities. Thank you for listening to the Midway Conference.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagner, will you make that copy either by email available to all the board members and the press?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
There has been some discussion in regard to some other localities, and it's been mentioned to me, other localities have stepped up to those employees that have, in turn, stepped up, shortages in departments, shortages in hiring, and what kind of position is the county in financially that, we know the school system has offered some stipends to their employees, the same in some other localities on all sides of the City of Martinsville, I think possibly Patrick County as well. What kind of position is the county in to offer some form of stipend to our employees? Again, knowing that we can't do this every year, but if we're in a financial position and can find funding, are we available to do that?
You may recall the Commonwealth of Virginia included stipend for all state employees.
State employees, I forgot. That is what I forgot.
Other localities has followed their trends. We so often follow whatever the state does because of the employees that work side by side. Over the past year, I mentioned our organization has seen much transition. We have had 73 employees leave the organization. And that sounds shocking. It is a lot of people. Many of them were due to retirements. Two was a result of death, and a few are a result of termination. The strong labor market has made a challenge to fill many of the vacancies, but our managers have done a tremendous job recruiting, interviewing, and onboarding new employees to fill those vacancies. And as it is now, we only have about 17 vacancies across all departments, including Social Services, Public Safety, Sheriff's Office, PSA. Our existing employees have really stepped up to ensure we provide uninterrupted service to our citizens by taking on additional tasks, working extra hours, and mentoring new employees. Could answer your question, the cost of the many vacancies that we have had, it has freed up some salary money that was not spent because of those vacancies. And we have also seen some growth in revenue that was not budgeted that would allow us the opportunity to give up to a $1,000 scholarship, stipend to all full-time county employees, Mr. Chairman.
And full-time being those employed for what length of time, or minimum, minimum length of time?
Knowing that the work was because of the employees stepping up, covering tasks when there was vacancies in the department, is my recommendation, we provide the stipend if it's your wish to employees that worked here on July 1st and continue to be, work here on the day of the stipend issue.
Is that full-time?
Full-time. And if it's your wish, I would suggest a maybe a partial amount for part-time employees that has also met those requirements. We do have, I guess you can almost say, permanent part-time employees that work at our revenue sites.
Mr. Wagner, do you have any idea what the part-time employees would be looking at?
We would probably create, if you talk about a dollar amount, it would be a tier of some sort, you know, where if they work maybe 10 hours on average a week, it'd be some proportional share of $1,000. We have not worked through this, no question.
DePauw, can you put that in perspective for me about the amount of salary that you said that we have actually saved with employees not being here compared to the amount of money that you're looking at possibly dispersing at one time?
I may have to ask Darrell Jones to assist me with that, but we've identified approximately $200,000 in vacancy savings. So the other 235,000 would come from unbudgeted revenues.
Unbudgeted revenues, that, and what was that for the year?
Do you remember, Darrell? The total, $435,000, I think the total is what it costs to get, because we would, we would give, for now and when, we'd fund two-thirds of that, and for Department of Social Services, we'd fund two-thirds of that, and the city contributing the other.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Buchanan?
Pretty much.
And we're speaking county, Sheriff's Department, who all are we speaking of here?
Every employee of the county payroll, Sheriff's Office, now and then, Department of Social Services. And we will have the Public Service Authority Board to do the same for it.
So you're saying we're looking in the neighborhood of $400 and some thousand dollars?
Yes.
I think the board has sort of been in tune with what's going on in other local counties and is aware of that. I'll just ask it, don't let it know how, what is the feeling of the board, and would anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appropriate the vacancy savings and unbudgeted revenues to provide a one-time stipend of $1,000 to all full-time county employees and a partial amount to part-time employees.
Second. Have a motion in a couple of seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, do you have anything else on informational items?
I do not.
That takes us to Agenda Item Number 16. Someone will cite the items that allow us to go into closed meeting as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, 2.23711A1 for discussion appointees to the Henry County Public Service Authority, 2.23711A7 for discussion of opinion legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate, 2.23711A5 for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. See you all upstairs in five minutes. Now, a closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan and second by Mr. Zare. Mr. Powell, will you pull the board, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, confess your knowledge on the public justice matters lawfully exempted public meeting requirement of code of Virginia section 2.3711, but we're discussing the board considers closed meeting. Are you voting? Is there?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dillard, I believe that you have a district appointments for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Stuart Bowman of the Collinsville District to the PSA Board, and also appoint Mr. Curtis Milner of the Irishwood District to the PSA Board for a four-year term beginning January 2023 and ending in January of 2027.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, do you have any other business for the board prior to adjourning to our 6:00 PM meeting?
I do not.
I said adjourning, recessing. Let me correct myself. Recessing. Board members, do you have any prior to recess?
Yes, sir.
I'll call for recess. We will start promptly at 6:00 PM for our evening session.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the 6:00 PM session of the December 13, 2022, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess of the afternoon session. I'd like to welcome all of the visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item, Matters Presented by the Public later in tonight's meeting. That will be Agenda Item Number 20. We're going to go back to an item from this afternoon, Agenda Item 6, that got moved to tonight. And Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration tonight.
I do, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors. This is in regard to the retirement of Robin Byrd. Whereas, the Henry County Board of Supervisors believes that quality local government services are the basic building blocks that all citizens expect and deserve. And whereas, those citizens who devote themselves to public service make a greater impact on their communities than they could ever know. And whereas, many hard-working public servants are behind the scenes, working diligently to ensure that systems run, phone calls are answered, and processes work. And whereas, one such employee is Robin Byrd, who served the Henry County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for 47 years before her retirement on December 31, 2022. Whereas, Mrs. Byrd has filled a vital role in the operation of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, managing the victim witness program through the annual grant application and budget development cycles, as well as ensuring the programs meet all state requirements. And whereas, this work helped reduce the trauma of crimes by empowering and assisting crime victims, witnesses, and significant others in reconstructing their lives through advocacy, support, information, and referrals. And whereas, Mrs. Byrd graciously served the citizens and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office during her tenure. Now therefore be it resolved on this 13th day of December 2022 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes Miss Robin Byrd and extends our gratitude for her 47 years of service to the people of Henry County. And this is signed Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. I will ask Ms. Buchanan, Mr. Slaughter, and Commonwealth Attorney if they will join me and Mrs. Byrd up front here. if they will join me and Mrs. Byrd up front here.
Rob, Robin, aren't you going to say something, Robin?
Well, I did a couple of the in-preparing remarks, but you're not going to find a finer public servant than Robin Byrd. She served our office since Henry County before I came to Earth.
I don't know if she's old enough to serve for forty-seven years. She looks pretty young.
Things have gone real higher than, I don't know, she may have been like middle school or something.
You inherited her, huh?
Before we had labor laws.
Right.
Robin is a great employee. There's never been anything I have ever asked her to do that she has not stepped up to the challenge to do. She's always there to offer a will in hand. I can't imagine the number of lives that she has touched in her service as victim witness director. She's going to be sorely missed, and I'm not looking forward to replacing her. Thank you, Ron.
I'm going to ask for everyone's indulgence for one more thing, since we do have family members and friends here. Brandon, would you, family members and friends, would you gather with Robin up front for a photo op as well, please?
Hey, Ron. Because Dicky's out there in the way, yeah?
Okay, yeah.
Don't they look a lot alike?
They do.
Yeah, see, four of the ones that's standing right there in a row now is all brothers.
Three brothers.
Yeah. Three brothers, no? And I believe that's all they had, was three brothers and a sister.
You can't hide in the back. You, you can't hide in the back.
I wanted that to be an opportunity to garner an additional memory, and I hope that you're taking away from not only this building, but the building next door, a lot of memories.
And they're old courthouse.
We will certainly.
When I have dreams, it's out the old courthouse. And then walking down hallway, and the wall was a little long, but it took that.
Well, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, family members.
Merry Christmas.
Agenda Item Seventeen will take up general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from BDOT. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Just have some routine maintenance matters going on. I'll keep you updated on. I know we've been patching a lot of potholes on bypass here lately. We've done some ditching in Fieldale. We're mowing the slopes on fifty-eight in Axton and getting there at the school. You know, when I met with the principal, it was one of her concerns, so we're taking care of that and catching up on a lot of work orders that we've gotten over the course of the summer. So anyway, still pretty busy, keeping an eye on the weather. Hopefully, we'll get through this little skip here coming up. And next week, maybe we won't get what the long-term forecast has predicted. So, but we're, we're ready to go if we do. You know, our chemicals are stock full, and our equipment's ready to go. We've, our hired equipment has done very well. We've made some changes to our contracts, so we've been able to get additional pieces that we haven't had in the past. So, so we're looking good for that. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Does anyone have anything from Ms. Hughes? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Eighteen, public hearing for proposed amendment to County Code, Chapter Six, Building in Buildings. Mr. Wagner. Okay, Mr. Clark, Director of Planning Zones here tonight.
All right, pursuant to Section fifteen-two fourteen-twenty-seven of the Code of Virginia, I am bringing this to the board to request a public hearing, no, to consider a public hearing to amend the Henry County Code, Section six dash two oh two, fees, to add subsection K for solar fees. This subsection will establish a consistent fee schedule for the issuance of solar building permits. You have what, what myself and my staff have put together as what we think is a very fair, or what I think is a very fair ordinance to codify something in the County Code that doesn't exist. And that is a building permit fee schedule for solar farms. We did the research. It's amazing how fast things are changing throughout the state of Virginia. When you try to research other localities for building permit fees for solar farms, most of them either don't even have them on their website, or they had them on their website, and you go to click on it, and it says file not found, meaning that they're changing things quickly, all the time. I'll be very upfront with you. I went through a lot of solar ordinances. These are very high-value installations when they're put in. This ordinance for the building permits is fair. It's pretty much right in the middle of a lot of the localities that I researched. I'm familiar with what some adjoining counties are doing. I like this better. The reason I like this better is that it's based on the size, the kilowatt size, of a solar farm, something that cannot be altered. It is what it is. If you tried to base this on the value of solar farms, your numbers are going to be all over the place. I'd much rather have something that's easy, that's measurable, that's reportable to the state, and that's what this is. I wanted to give you some examples, just so you can get a feel of what we're talking about. It's not exorbitant, but I think it's fair. You know, most of our projects, solar farm projects, have been anywhere from three megawatt, four megawatt, five megawatt, up to twenty megawatt. We've got one out in Axton that is still in the works that's huge, which is over two hundred megawatts. But the twenty-megawatt site, which is probably something that's two to three hundred acres in size, their building permit fee is going to be just north of thirty-three thousand dollars. I don't think that's an exorbitant amount for a solar company to pay for the amount of effort, work hours, man-hours that goes into the review of some of these packages that weigh better than forty pounds when they come into us. Anyway, that's all I have for right now.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this at six thirteen P M. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this proposed amendment to the County Code? Is there anyone wishing? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six thirteen. What is the desire of the board in regard to staff recommendation and the thorough background that you've been given by Mr. Clark verbally tonight and in written form as part of your working papers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board adopt the electrical fee schedule for solar installation as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Nineteen, public hearing, rezoning application, R dash twenty-two dash eighteen, Eduardo de Guerrero. And we have again, Mr. Clark to give us background material on this.
This property is located at seventeen thirty-six Village Fork Grove. It's in the Blackberry District. Tax note number here is thirty-nine three lots three thirty, three thirty X, three thirty D. The request is to rezone approximately two acres from suburban residential district to commercial district B one. The applicant here wishes to establish an automobile sales lot on this property. Planning Commission had significant concerns regarding the effect that use and the rezoning would have on the adjoining residents. The property is also located in the Hundred Year Floodplain with a history of substantial flooding. Filing a public hearing, both the Planning Commission and staff both recommended the request be denied.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this at six fifteen. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning case? Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six fifteen. This is located in my district. I've done quite a bit of review, talked with Mr. Clark. I've actually talked with the applicant who called me, and I called back. I've also passed in this corridor virtually ten to fifteen times a week. If you count to and from work, you can double that for the days that I'm at work. I have seen what was indicated by the Planning Commission, significant flooding on certain days. Actually, across the road and up just a little ways from this, not that it affects this lot, I've seen cars underwater before, and it does take quite a bit of rainfall. I think the Planning Commission and staff has done a thorough job in researching this, including what is already there in that suburban residential. And I can't make a motion from the chair, but I would agree with the Planning Commission if someone will make a motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we agree with the rezoning request, that it be denied. I likewise am familiar with this property. I had a cousin fifty years ago that worked in that garage, and he painted the first pickup truck I ever owned for me, and I waited water in that building during the time that he was working on my truck. So I know it's a, it's a flood plain, definitely.
We have a motion to deny, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Matters Presented by the Public. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? I see one hand. I have a brief policy statement. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you've agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board, staff, and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation to around three minutes. Mr. Stigall.
I'm Mr. Stigall. First thing I'd like to say, I was at the three o'clock meeting, and I was really impressed by Dale Wagner's presentation. I think, I think the county's lucky to have him. He's a great guy, and he's so good with people and so honest. And I trust him without, he's got great integrity. And I think the county's lucky to have him. The other thing that I was trying to get Lisa Price Hughes to stay, at one time, she would stay for the meetings and hear what the public had to say about the roads. And now she talks first and leaves, and she said, "That's the choice of the Board of Supervisors. They got it like that." They, and, and I think that's not fair to some of the taxpayers here. They said that she had come to Horse Pasture and meet with the people there. And I think she needs to stay and hear what the taxpayers have to say here. Because I have tried to get Collinsville Highlands paved. It's getting rougher and rougher, and I don't want another patch job. But she said it has to be on a year, a year's agenda before they can do anything. They plan for the one year to another what they're going to pay. So I don't know what they got planned for Collinsville for the next year. But if you, maybe if you could help us on that. It, it's getting rougher and rougher when you turn down Burndale. We've got only, and I asked for a traffic study, but that's, I don't think that's going to happen. If they can see how many cars go in and out of there every day, that would be essential, if we could get that somewhere down the road. They, they tore and gravelled it, and they went back to Slurryfield, and it's getting rough again. We just got so much traffic on Pioneer, Burndale, and through there. They did a good job on Colonial Drive when they, when Kenneth King got that paved for us. But I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, Mr. Wagner, do you have any other items of business for the board's consideration? Board members, do you have any? If not, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor? It is six-zero. Everyone have a good evening and a Merry Christmas.